Good evening, everyone. And welcome to the regular scheduled meeting of the Beaver Creek City Council. And this is the most packed this room's been in years. And it's so neat to see everybody here. And you're all here for our budget hearing, correct? Ah, okay, alright. Well, anyway, it's a real pleasure to start this meeting today with the...to congratulate the girls cross-country and the girls soccer. What a fantastic season you must have had. I'm gonna ask the coaches to make a comment or two here up front, and then we'd like to have you all come up. So, we'll start with cross-country. Coach?
Oh, you shouldn't...oh, gosh. Should never give me a microphone. Um, I want to be really brief, and I want to thank Beaver Creek City Council for the sign. For us, it's been a motivational thing when we talk about goals for the year. And we do a lot of running on the streets, so we see a lot of these signs. And, you know, we talk about making a legacy, and that's something, you know, those signs are gonna be around, and, you know, their kids, even your grandkids, when you come back to your hometown, that little number might be just a small number, but it will represent what we have been working towards since June. So, it means a great deal to us. It's an honor to represent our school district and the city of Beaver Creek. So, these girls work extremely hard, and it's just a joy to coach them every day. And the soccer girls, it was pretty neat, within 24 hours, they kinda started us off with a championship, got us fired up, and really helped us. So, what a weekend for Beaver Creek. And we were happy to represent the city. So, thank you very much for the sign.
Alright, Coach, if you can have your girls come up, we'd like to present them with a commemorative sign and a city pin. So, if you want to come by, and I'm gonna hand the mic to one end, and you're gonna pass it down and introduce yourself on the air.
I'm Kendall Hobbs.
I'm Ashton Glock.
I'm Taylor Ewart.
I'm Jules Williams.
I'm Savannah Rourke.
I'm Jody Pearson.
I'm Bentley Barrett.
I'm Molly Bernhard.
I'm Emma Johnson.
Alright, that's fantastic. And if there are any parents here that might want to take a photo, please do so. Once all the cameras and phones are down, we'll move on here. But...did they get pins?
I've got one more gift for ya.
Yes. And has all the cross-country teams signed the magazines up here? Alright, so, thank you.
Okay, I just want to make one further announcement, because it was a really big deal, and they'll be mentioning it. And I know we don't do individual things, but we've kinda had a big deal. Taylor, can you step forward for a second, please? Taylor Ewart, as set many records, she was the state individual champion as well for the team, which was a really big deal for us, because it was our first individual champion. She was also named, like, a week or so ago, the Gatorade Athlete of the Year for Ohio, and has a banner and those things coming too. Set a race walk record, all kinds of records, but I wanted to give her a little bit for being an individual state champion. So, give her a round of applause, please.
Alright, ladies, thank you very much. Thanks for all you've done, and congratulations on your win. Well, of course, absolutely.
I mean, you didn't do any hard work this year, did you? Congratulations.
You're very welcome. Alright, the coach for the soccer team, please.
Hi. Congratulations. Yes, you did. Okay. I'm not used to using a microphone, because I typically project pretty loud, being in a classroom all day. So, obviously, I'm not as eloquent with my words as Coach A is, but believe me, this is really hard for him to not be a part of all of these events we're gonna be doing over the last...over the next couple of weeks. Winning a state championship isn't easy. It takes a combination of so many things. A little bit of luck, a lot of hard work, and especially on the girl's side, a group of players who want to play together and work hard for each other. That was the most impressive thing about this team throughout the entire season. Even adding on, really, another half of a season, they wanted to be there every day. They pushed each other every single day. They never accepted anything but the best from each other at practice. And the only way you win a state championship is when every person on your team is working towards that one goal. And to be able to do it with a 24-0 season is fantastic, although I say there's no reason to win a state championship unless you're gonna go undefeated. So, we should try that again. We had amazing players throughout the entire season, a great group of seniors, underclassmen who worked really hard for them. So, really proud of every single one of them. There's not really anything else really I can say other than that. It was an amazing year, an amazing experience. And as always, as soon as all these events are over, we'll be having our meeting in March to get ready for...so, it's never... With your teammates. With your teammates is really, really special. So, good job, come on up. We'll probably have to make a bigger line than what they did. And, thanks, parents!
Congratulations, girls.
There you go.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Coach, congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations, too.
Uh, our head coach is...yeah, I'll grab stuff for him, and then we have another coach who's not here. Okay, thank you. If you're not in a skirt, you might have to go down a little farther. So, you might want to put the people not in skirts in the front. Well, I'm just saying, if they want a picture and we've gotta squat, people with skirts may not want to be in the front squatting. Or you may want to be in the front squatting, I don't know. Oh, thank you. And, uh, yeah, I need...perfect, yeah.
There we go. Somebody knows how to take a photo.
Oh, wow. Okay. I'm not in a skirt.
Let's do the introduction. Pass the mic.
Oh, okay. Sorry, sorry. Okay, hold on. You guys are too big. Get out of here! I'm not in a skirt.
Let's do the introduction. Pass the mic.
Oh, okay. Sorry, sorry. Okay, hold on. You guys are too big.
Come out of here.
Get out of here! Alright, okay. I'm...we're used to this.
Can we pass the mic down, and then everybody can fix themselves up?
Alright, start there. Start that way and come back.
I'm Maggie Holstein. I play wing.
I'm Jenna McCartney, I play forward.
I'm Lauren Galloway, I play goalkeeper.
I'm Heidi Orloff, I play midfield.
I'm Molly Zalock, I play defense.
I'm Diana Vainio, I play midfield.
I'm Kate Helton, I play defense.
I'm Kennedy Spahn, I play midfield.
I'm Madeline Narker, I play defense.
I'm Morgan Courier, I play midfield.
I'm Lexi Grayson, I'm a goalkeeper.
I'm Kayla Nuski, and I'm a forward.
I'm Lauren Hoff, I'm manager.
I'm Ella Bianco, and I play defense.
I'm Molly Buckwitz, and I play forward.
I'm Kelly Hawkins, and I play forward.
I'm Kestley Lauterbach, and I play defense.
I'm Celia Scott, and I play forward.
I'm Cassie Rodriguez, and I play forward.
I'm Ashley Vaughn, and I play midfield.
I'm Tierney McKittrick, and I play defense.
Ladies, congratulations. Let's give 'em a round of applause. If you've not signed one of the books up here, or all four of them, actually, if you haven't signed them, please do. And with that, we want to read something for Coach Pop. So, ladies, you wanna have your seats, please. Coach, you want to stay up here with me, please? That's good.
I am.
Well, you know, and on top of everything else, these girls accomplished a whole lot this year. But we also have a coach that accomplished a lot, apparently, because he was recognized in a lot of different ways this year. So, we also, and this is signed by everybody on council, we would like to take this opportunity to congratulate you as being the recipient of the 2018 High School Youth Girls National Coach of the Year for Large School, along with the 2018 Ohio Scholastic Soccer Coaches Association Coach of the Year for Girls Division One. Your passion to encourage, organize, and lead your student athletes is deserving of much praise. We would like to wish you, Coach Pop, the girls soccer team, the best that you...the best as you continue to demonstrate excellence on the playing field and beyond. So, with Coach Pop not being here, I'd like to present this to you, Coach, to present to him for us. Yes, thank you very much.
If you know Coach Pop, he's amazing, and he would never...he would be way too humble to ever express what this means to him. But I know from talking to him over the last couple of months, what a big honor this was. He did get himself to Chicago to accept the award. It's pretty amazing. Our girls are so lucky, and me, as a coach, to have worked with them for the last 10 years, to work with someone who is so dedicated to every aspect of a player. And he's a really remarkable man. If you don't know him, say hi to him, he'll say hi to everybody. And I'm sure he'll be watching this on TV, so, girls, if you could give him a Beaver Creek You Know as we end this, I'm sure it would make him smile. So, Lexi, please? Go ahead. Go ahead. Yeah. Okay. Beaver Creek You Know on three. One, two, three. Beaver Creek You Know!
Alright. Congratulations, everyone, thank you. Now, don't forget, the budget is next, I'm sure you're wanting to stay here.
Alright. Congratulations, everyone, thank you.
Now, don't forget, the budget is next, I'm sure you're wanting to stay here.
I'm probably thinking of getting every two. Oh, my. We messed up, so... I just want to have a... We gotta stand to go. Oh, my gosh. Sorry. You might have the flag. You might have the flag. I love it. Oh, my God, Ashley, I think you leave that. God! I see that. Ashley's running the city council. But also, too, the smell is just lingering in the backyard. Every time it's...
Take two. Okay, council, much appreciated for what you've done on the sign. We've got some great personnel, and they put together all the championship teams. So, thank you. You're welcome.
Alright, that... Sure.
I need a couple left, though, for...we don't want to have to make anymore. There's a couple aren't here, so I need a couple.
Alright, ladies and gentlemen, we need to move on.
Thank you.
You're very welcome, thank you so much.
Thank you.
I'd like to call the meeting to order, and may we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Curran?
Here.
Councilmember Litterell?
Here.
Councilmember Rushing?
Here.
Councilmember Upton?
Here.
Councilmember Van?
Here.
Vice Mayor Garcia?
Here.
Mayor Stone?
Here.
And I'd like to turn this over to Councilmember Litterell, please, for the pledge.
Hi, and I want to welcome the Boy Scouts that are here in the audience this evening. So, if you'd like to come on up, we can do the pledge, if you'd like, and we can introduce yourself. I guess we had the soccer and everyone in the track here, so... Are you ready?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And if we could just take a moment of silence to think and reflect about the world that we have, and how precious it is, and I'd also like to think about how important it is to succeed. And I was actually just inspired a few moments ago by our young athletes here in the audience and our scouts, and I wanted to mention that to succeed, it is necessary to accept the world as it is, and to also rise above it to be the best that you can be. Thank you, have a seat.
Thank you.
Would you like to introduce yourself?
Henry Taylor.
And what troop are you with?
14.
Well, welcome, thanks for coming.
You're welcome.
Alright. We have an agenda before us this evening, any changes?
Seeing none, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda, sir.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda submitted. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries, thank you. Next on approval of the minutes, we'll start with January 14, 2019, the regular meeting.
Motion to approve the regular meeting of the January the 14th.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the meeting minutes as submitted for January 14th. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Extentions?
Aye.
Thank you. Next, ordinances, resolutions, and PUDs. Resolution 19-21.
This is a resolution approving the application to create a community entertainment district at the mall at Fairfield Commons.
Thank you. And who is presenting?
Mr. McGrath?
Thank you, Mayor Stone, members of the city council. Tonight, we're considering the creation of a community entertainment district. As you saw in the agenda item report, this was established in 2005 by the state of Ohio to encourage entertainment districts that have a positive impact on your community. I think we've seen over the years, and hopefully for a lot more years to come, the mall Fairfield Commons has met all the thresholds and had significant investment in our community, and also tremendous benefit from a social arts and community entertainment area. Are there any specific questions you have? Matt Jerkovich is here from Washington Prime, the owners of the mall, but I'd be happy to answer any questions, as I'm sure he would be if you have anything specific to the project. Thank you.
Thank you. Council, any discussion?
I'd just like to thank everyone for all the work on this. I think it's gonna be a great asset. The mall's a wonderful place, but having this entertainment district, I think, is gonna just enhance us and move us forward as the malls change and the development encounters around there. So, I'm excited.
Good. Anyone else?
Just a quick question. We've had discussions in the past about that open container district, and I believe that was limited within the community to one in so many miles. Is this district under that same, or are we limited to the number of districts in our community that can do this?
No, there's a set criteria in terms of contiguous acreage and an investment requirement for an area to be considered for the community entertainment district. I don't think there is a limit. Steven, correct me if I'm wrong, it's a per number, per the community.
No, actually, the center up at Columbus, I believe, has within it three.
Oh, wow.
Three. Now, but this is not open container.
Right. It's a separate one.
Completely separate, yes.
And some of the same guidelines.
I don't want any confusion with that, yeah.
Right.
This is strictly to allow easier access to liquor licenses, so restaurants can develop, basically. D5Js, I believe they're called.
Question, is the process speeded up for the D5 under the entertainment district?
To the normal procedure you'd have to go through, do you skip a lot of the steps?
It's the same process. When you fill out your application to the state liquor board, you would just put that is within an entertainment district, and it's a D5J, so I think there isn't...it's a lot...it should be expedited in terms of review process, because it does fall within that specific area, not in the whole city.
Yeah, the one big difference here is, a lot of times in jurisdictions, there simply aren't any available, and so you don't have the transfer. This is an application, so you effectively just file your application. Also, if you had to go out in the common market, you could spend, you know, $25,000, $50,000 or more for it. This is probably around $2,500. So, it's much lower, because it's strictly an application, but it has to meet very strict criteria, and the mall does. Anyone else? Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Mayor, there's no further comment. I would move to approve Resolution 19-21.
Second.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 19-21. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries, thank you. Next on approval of the minutes, we'll start with January 14, 2019, the regular meeting.
Motion to approve the regular meeting of the January the 14th.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the meeting minutes as submitted for January 14th. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Extentions?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, motion carries. Next, the minutes for the January 28, 2019 work session. Any changes?
Mr. Mayor, there's no comments, I would move for approval.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes as submitted for January 28th. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Extentions?
Aye.
Thank you. Next, ordinances, resolutions, and PUDs. Resolution 19-21.
This is a resolution approving the application to create a community entertainment district at the mall at Fairfield Commons.
Thank you. And who is presenting?
Mr. McGrath?
Thank you, Mayor Stone, members of the city council. Tonight, we're considering the creation of a community entertainment district. As you saw in the agenda item report, this was established in 2005 by the state of Ohio to encourage entertainment districts that have a positive impact on your community. I think we've seen over the years, and hopefully for a lot more years to come, the mall Fairfield Commons has met all the thresholds and had significant investment in our community, and also tremendous benefit from a social arts and community entertainment area. Are there any specific questions you have? Matt Jerkovich is here from Washington Prime, the owners of the mall, but I'd be happy to answer any questions, as I'm sure he would be if you have anything specific to the project. Thank you.
Thank you. Council, any discussion?
I'd just like to thank everyone for all the work on this. I think it's gonna be a great asset. The mall's a wonderful place, but having this entertainment district, I think, is gonna just enhance us and move us forward as the malls change and the development encounters around there. So, I'm excited.
Good. Anyone else?
Just a quick question. We've had discussions in the past about that open container district, and I believe that was limited within the community to one in so many miles. Is this district under that same, or are we limited to the number of districts in our community that can do this?
No, there's a set criteria in terms of contiguous acreage and an investment requirement for an area to be considered for the community entertainment district. I don't think there is a limit. Steven, correct me if I'm wrong, it's per number, per the community.
No, actually, the center up at Columbus, I believe, has within it three.
Oh, wow.
Three. Now, but this is not open container.
Right. It's a separate one.
Completely separate, yes.
And some of the same guidelines.
I don't want any confusion with that, yeah.
Right.
This is strictly to allow easier access to liquor licenses, so restaurants can develop, basically. D5Js, I believe they're called.
Question, is the process speeded up for the D5 under the entertainment district?
To the normal procedure you'd have to go through, do you skip a lot of the steps?
It's the same process. When you fill out your application to the state liquor board, you would just put that is within an entertainment district, and it's a D5J, so I think there isn't...it's a lot...it should be expedited in terms of review process, because it does fall within that specific area, not in the whole city.
Yeah, the one big difference here is, a lot of times in jurisdictions, there simply aren't any available, and so you don't have the transfer. This is an application, so you effectively just file your application. Also, if you had to go out in the common market, you could spend, you know, $25,000, $50,000 or more for it. This is probably around $2,500. So, it's much lower, because it's strictly an application, but it has to meet very strict criteria, and the mall does. Anyone else? Do I hear a motion to accept?
I'd like to make a motion to accept the fourth quarter.
I have a motion to accept the fourth quarter 2018 financial summary. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Extentions? Motion carries. As we're moving right along, it is council time, and we start on my right tonight, and we'll start with Councilmember Litterell.
Thank you, sir. I would just like to...Mr. Casero mentioned the golf club, and I was there for a recent event, and I just want to commend the staff at the golf club. And the meal was just excellent, service was great, staff was friendly, just, it was a very nice event, and the food and everything, just, everything went really well. So, they should...very kudos to all of them, because it was...there was probably 150, maybe 170 people there, and it was very nice, and it just reminded me of how often I would like to see the golf club used for weddings, because it is a great venue. And if we can just, you know, update as we keep going, as we have been, I think that, you know, it's a great venue, and hopefully, the spring will be here, and we'll have some more rounds of golf, and it'll work out a little more. But it's just, you know, it's really...when I first came on council, you know, the golf club, everyone's always, you know, it's the golf club, but, you know, it is truly, you know, an event. It's a place for great events and people, and we're gonna be having the bands again, I hope, this spring and summer, and that brought a lot of people out. So, I think it's a gym, it's a hidden gym, that a lot of people still don't realize is back there.
Appreciate it, because there's a lot, like you say, a lot of golfers know it, but those that aren't golfers don't know it as much, and they can use it as well.
I run into people that still do not realize that it's a public club.
And that's, we've talked about that before.
Yeah, it's shocking to me, so...
Councilmember Rushing?
Thank you, Mayor Stone. I just want to briefly touch upon a few events that I attended with several of the council members, I'm sure it'll be renovated throughout the council time, but I was happy to attend the first Lego event. It's the second year that I attended, and to see the entire nurse center floor filled with... Uh, we did get about five percent more in property taxes than we had originally budgeted. That's, uh, David Graham's, uh, conservative estimates of what we get, and again, uh, we ended up getting a lot of, uh, delinquent taxes now being paid as the economy bulks up and, uh, the housing stock keeps turning over, so again, uh, that's a good sign. You recall, uh, we did, uh, where we, we were able to transfer the six hundred, or nine hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars to cover the due-to-do from, to get that off the books, and, uh, I'm happy to know at the end of the fiscal year, we, uh, achieved our twenty percent. We thought that was going to be pretty close, and so even after we did that, uh, which was an audit recommendation, we, uh, ended up, uh, at the twenty percent mark. A couple of, uh, other major things going on, uh, hotel motels, you can see that, uh, those are springing up all over the place, and we ended up, uh, getting quite a bit of more money for, uh, that revenue source. It was up like six percent over last year. And, uh, the big, uh, item in there in the general fund is the, uh, interest revenue. You saw that, uh, it was about three hundred percent over what we had budgeted. That's a couple of factors. Uh, last year, we were getting about one percent on our money, and now we're getting about two and a half. And, uh, we also renegotiated our banking services agreement, and we went from about a half percent on the, uh, operating money that just sits in our account to, uh, one and a quarter. So again, as things, uh, proceed along the way, and we have those, uh, fund balances that are, um, idle and waiting to be, uh, utilized for capital projects and things like that, that, uh, helps us out in the long run. The other thing that, uh, it's interesting, the weather, how it plays an important role in, uh, our actual budget. So again, we had a lot less snow events in seventeen. It's hard to remember that, but, uh, compared to the year before, and, uh, we actually did save a lot of money in salt and overtime for that, uh, particular period. Now again, new story this winter, uh, basically after January, it started picking up the pace, so. And again, remember that, uh, the, uh, salt prices went from forty-eight bucks to eighty-eight bucks, so again, uh, not likely to see that, uh, event occur where we're going to, uh, end up, uh, saving some money during the winter events, but the other thing that it affects is that you recall, uh, we had a very wet year in eighteen. I think we had like ten more inches than the average. Uh, that affected the golf course, obviously. Their, uh, shutdown at some point when, uh, the fairways are just too, uh, soggy to get out, and we had kind of a, yeah, late start last year to begin with, and so we ended up doing about, uh, almost five fif- fifty, or, uh, five hundred and seventy rounds less this year than we did the previous year, so, uh, Steve's always touting the, uh, average cost per round, and you can see that that adds up pretty quickly, so, uh, you see that, uh, the end result in the, uh, financials as far as, uh, the year that the golf course had, so. But overall, uh, it was a, uh, a, a very decent year for us, uh, and we held our own and maintained that twenty percent while, you know, doing that, uh, write-off for the due-to-do from, so. Be happy to answer any questions you might have related to the year and recap. I lost my audience saying that, but, uh, I'm sure they had some, plenty of questions.
Okay, are there any comments or questions?
I just have one comment.
Please.
So regarding the salt, there's thirty-seven days till spring.
Yes. And it's funny because, again, if you think about the storms we've had, when have they been? Saturdays and Sundays.
Every one of them.
Every time I wake up in the morning on Sunday, I look out the window and I just see dollar signs, but, uh, that's, that's the way us finance people work, so.
And on holidays.
And the holidays.
Every school teacher is going, "Why on Sunday?"
Right.
And we're saying, "Why on Sunday?"
Anyone else? Do I hear a, uh, a motion to accept?
I'd like to mo- make a motion to accept.
Second.
The fourth quarter.
I have a motion to accept the, uh, fourth quarter of two thousand eighteen financial summary. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Extentions? Motion carries. As we're moving right along, as it is council time, and how, we start on my right tonight, and we'll start with Councilmember Littrell.
Thank you, sir. I would just like to, um, Mr. Casero mentioned the golf club, and I was there for a recent event, and I just want to commend the staff at the golf club, and, um, the, the meal was just excellent, uh, service was great, staff was friendly, just, it was a very nice event, and the food and everything just, everything went, went really well, so they should, uh, very kudos to all of them because it was, there was probably a hundred and fifty, maybe a hundred and seventy people there, and, and it was very nice, and it just reminded me of how often I would like to see the golf club used for weddings, uh, because it is a great venue, um, and if we can just, you know, update as we keep going, as we have been, I think that, you know, it's a great venue, and hopefully, uh, the spring will be here, and, uh, we'll have some more rounds of golf, and it'll, uh, work out a little more, but it's just, you know, it's really, when I first came on council, you know, the golf clubs, everyone's always, you know, it's the golf club, but, you know, it, it is truly, you know, an event. It's a place for great events and people, and we're going to be having the bands again, I hope, this spring and summer, and, uh, that brought a lot of people out, so I think it's a gem. It's a hidden gem that a lot of people still don't realize or is back there.
Appreciate it, because there's a lot, like you say, a lot of golfers know it, but those that aren't golfers don't know it as much, that they can use it as well.
I run into people that still do not realize that it's a public club.
And that's, we've talked about that before.
Yeah, it's, it's shocking to me, so.
Councilmember Rushing?
Thank you, Mayor Stone. Um, just want to, um, briefly touch upon a few events that I attended, um, with several of the council members, I'm sure be renovated, uh, throughout the council time, but, um, I was happy to attend the first Lego event. Um, it's the second year that I attended, and to see the entire Nutter Center floor filled with, um, young minds, um, working with, um, the STEM disciplines on trying to solve problems, not only as, you know, individuals, but also as teams, and putting their efforts into helping others and other teams. Um, it was interesting hearing the stories of how if one team's, um, robots shut down, their teams would stop what they were doing and help each other to succeed. It's that kind of, um, uh, work and, um, team effort that makes something a true viable and fit to use in the future. Um, Beaver Creek Night at the Nutter Center, um, for Wright State, um, we came off with a, a win, so that was a great event, um, to cheer on our Wright State Raiders. And also, um, again, um, congratulations, and much thanks to, um, our Beaver Creek Rotary, um, for their service, um, and to giving back to the community. Um, another great fun pancake breakfast, um, to support the good cause of our, um, high, our Beaver Creek Band, so just thank the Rotary for that. That's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Van?
I can do some repeats.
There you go.
At the first Lego event, I interviewed, uh, several of the, of the, of the youth. Um, it is, it is an activity that is equal to a sports team like soccer or, or cross-country or, or basketball, um, because they start as a team solving a problem, and they learn team skills, and they learn how important it is to have every, everybody on the team involved, so it's going to affect their lives and their job forever. The ones that I interviewed were trying to figure out when we start space travel, how we're going to keep our muscles, um, strong without gravity, and so they were inventing ways for exercise on, on space, um, ships. It was really to have them think about how the body works and, and solve it was just terrific. Um, and then the, and the Lego robots were also cool, but I really enjoyed, uh, quizzing the kids on why they chose this and how it was working, and just was so, so pleased with them. Um, Wright State Night at, at, um, it's really nice that Wright State reaches out to the surrounding communities and lets us have a, a night that they declare for, for Beaver Creek. Um, it was a really nice event, and I'm also very thankful that, uh, the, the strike is over, and I just really hope that, um, the university is able to come back, and I, kudos to everybody who, who negotiated and came to a conclusion, and I'm just hopeful that we can still have a very strong, um, university in our neighborhood. Um, and as for cross-country and soccer, I am so proud of these girls. Uh, I know that, um, was playing, my daughter played, played soccer and, and played in college and played soccer, and we traveled all over. It affects these youths for the rest of their life. They will use the, the teamwork and the skills that they learn on how to work in a team and make things happen the rest of their lives, and that's all I can say. It's just, I am so excited that they won, and I am so excited that Beaver Creek has a strong program. Uh, good for, good for them. Good for us. Thank you.
All right, I agree. Thank you. Councilmember Upton?
Thank you, Mayor Stone, and, uh, I'd like to throw in my seconds to what, uh, um, Councilmember Van and Councilmember Ryan said about Wright State and, uh, Beaver Creek Night. Was glad to see the Raiders bring home a win. That was exciting. Uh, and also, uh, second on the pancake breakfast from the Rotary Club, uh, teamed with the marching band, that, that's such a growing event. You know, I can remember when it was held at other facilities, and it has just grown over the years, and, uh, what, what a, what a community event. It really is a great one. Uh, I'd be remiss if I didn't say a happy anniversary to my wife tonight, uh, we're celebrating seven years tonight. Uh, so I, I will, uh, be running home to have dinner because, uh, uh, we plan to spend dinner tonight.
So has it got the candles and...
Probably not. Baby food, macaroni and cheese, chicken fingers, but we'll be spending the night together. Um, and lastly, I don't want to put, uh, Mr. Thonro on the, on the spot, but I think I might. Um, I want to give a shout-out to our road crews. Uh, I know they've been working very hard over the last several weeks, um, and there's a, a pretty cool feature that, uh, I think any of our residents and community members can take advantage of, where they can, is it Geotag, a pothole, uh, where they can, and Mr. Thonro, if you could come up, you probably know more details than I do about it, but, um, you know, they can just send in where they found a pothole that may need to be fixed, and our crews can run out quickly and take care of it.
Do we have enough space on the website to list them all?
I took advantage of it last week, and it was fixed today, so I was pretty excited.
It's a, it's a, a new technology that we're working on to continue to grow and develop and be able to respond to those potholes as quickly as I can. I'll, I'll thank, uh, Councilmember Upton and the rest of City Council, Mayor, Vice Mayor for their support, uh, of our, of our staff, being able to go out there, uh, during the late evenings and, uh, clear the roads for the residents. And as a result of that freezing thaw, we certainly do get lots of potholes. Uh, if you, if you see one, let us know, and, uh, you can call our office, go through the website, uh, and we'll get out there and get it filled, but many times we, we don't know where they all are until, God bless you, until, uh, sometimes we get that feedback. So thanks again for the kind words. I'll pass them along to the staff. They, uh, certainly put a lot of, a lot of hours in, and, and I'll pass your appreciation and kind words along to them, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's all for me tonight.
Councilmember Curran?
Thank you. Uh, Mayor, I'd certainly third it for all the events that, uh, have been mentioned here. There is outstanding, uh, work by the staff, as, uh, Councilmember Littrell mentioned, out at the golf course, uh, really did an outstanding job in the dinner and, and the Legos, which I had an opportunity to see, just showed, uh, as Councilmember Van mentioned, cooperation between, uh, youngsters who are going to be our future scientists and researchers, and that was fantastic to see. And, uh, just all the other events, the important thing in that pancake breakfast is two-thirds of that money goes to the band, and the, and the, uh, the Rotary Club then keeps the other twenty-five percent that they use for projects in the community. So it was really great. I'm done.
Are you finished? Okay, thank you. Vice Mayor?
Yes, thank you. Uh, so best for last, I guess, besides our valiant mayor here. Uh, I echo everything else. Congratulations to the girls' cross-country and girls' soccer teams. Those are amazing, amazing accomplishments, and we're so happy. The twenty-four hour achievements are really cool to have back-to-back, and, uh, again, the Rotary Breakfast was great. We had a chance to listen to some really great performers during breakfast, which I think was new this year, uh, or at least I was there early last year and didn't stay for the entertainment, but, uh, it was really nice to have the students play music while we were there and just see the talent that we have, um, all throughout the city, so.
All right, thank you. Uh, again, I attended most of the items that were discussed tonight, and they were all fantastic. I'm going to bring up a, a couple of things that are upcoming. One is the Lego you heard about, the next, two, two steps above what the competition we saw last week is happening next month at, uh, at the Nutter Center, and this is where they have the large robots where they take up a, a whole floor space of the, uh, of the gym. So it is going to be amazing, and so any young people, uh, I, you know, interested in engineering and science and math, might want to consider going out or taking a look about, at this Lego operation. It's really, it's really something. Uh, let's see, what else did I have? Oh, I would like to ask Diane, our clerk, to give us just a, a heads-up on the Weekend of Jazz. Weekend of Jazz is coming up, uh, what is it, the first weekend and, uh... You got a slide? All right, lucky there. And this is always a, a wonderful event, but I asked Diane to comment if she doesn't mind, because Diane's been a part of this for a long time. Oh, boy.
For a while. And I don't even have kids there anymore.
I know, but you're still a big part of it.
Yeah, Weekend of Jazz actually starts Thursday, the twenty-eighth, which is the free evening, which features all of our jazz bands locally here at Beaver Creek, and I believe we have four this year, um, and they are fabulous, so if you have a chance to go out Thursday night, it's free, go out and hear them because they are awesome. They always are. Um, Friday night and Saturday night, we have headliners. Um, tickets you can get at weekendofjazz.org. Um, special EFX All-Stars is Friday night, and Eastman New Jazz Ensemble is on Saturday night. They're both two fabulous professional, um, groups, and where else but Beaver Creek can you get professional ensembles coming and playing here at our high school auditorium? You can't, and for the price, you can't beat it. So go out to weekendofjazz.org and get your tickets. They are going fast.
All right, thank you very much. I mean, I couldn't have come closer to doing that well. Uh, but anyway, it's a big event and, uh, certainly worth a visit. Uh, I wanted to then just follow up and also congratulate the cross-country team and the soccer team. I mean, it's just, it's not every day we get to do this, but it makes us all up here feel so good when we do get to recognize, uh, our young people in the community. And with that being said, before, before we close, or after we close this evening, I see some young people in the audience. If you would like to talk to any of us, you're more than welcome to stick around for a few minutes and come up and talk to us, and, uh, but with that, I'm going to move us on, and we're going to the City Managers Report. Mr. Landrum?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I want to continue on with a couple of announcements here. The Beaver Creek Police Department had an annual awards, uh, naming Officer of the Year is Officer Brian Klein. Uh, Civilian of the Year, Sarah DeBord, I believe she's one of our dispatchers, and our COPP of the Year, Don Wagner. Uh, you know, it's, uh, we appreciate, uh, their service, uh, you know, they were, of course, uh, rose above, uh, for their distinction of, uh, having, uh, being, uh, awarded the Employee of the Year for, uh, each category, so congratulations to them and thank you for, uh, they, all they do. Wanted to mention, uh, uh, that also Saturday, it was a busy day. I was, of course, uh, doing the pancakes and plating them up at the Pancake Breakfast, but, uh, right after, uh, I got, uh, done with that, I ran out to the Beaver Creek Golf Course to check out the, how the, our, um, uh, job fair was going, and it was, uh, doing really well. I just wanted to make sure that everybody knows that the job fair, uh, as far as the job fair itself may be over, but, uh, there are still additional positions that are needed, so, uh, please, if you didn't make it out, don't feel like you missed your opportunity. Please, uh, go to beavercreechohio.gov, and you'll be able to, uh, look at the positions still there, and you can apply, so please do that, uh, but again, all your information is on your website, uh, and click on the employment, uh, link, and you'll see the jobs listing. I wanted to also bring everybody up to, uh, that our city, uh, Beaver Creek residents, we also need boards and commissions. Uh, these are various boards and commissions that the, uh, council here depends, uh, upon to, uh, to perform certain tasks. They're all listed there. Uh, there, the more of a description of it is listed on our website, beavercreechohio.gov, uh, please click on that, and you'll see a, uh, news article, actually, and you click, and then it tells you about all the positions that are listed, how many, gives you a little rough idea what it is, how often they meet, uh, and then at the very bottom, if you scroll all the way down, you'll be able to hit Apply, and you can actually apply online. Now, our applications here, it's running, uh, real close, so Friday at, uh, four PM